All right. Hey, thank you for all you coming here. All right, there we go. We appreciate everyone that has all the time and effort that's been going on to put this in. We're going to go ahead and open the meeting. I've asked Shawna Horlick to give us the opening prayer.
Okay. I have a thought too.
And a thought too.
Do I do it from here?
Yes. You can do it right there.
All right.
Yeah, I wouldn't want you to go down there. You can do it right there.
That's a lot of nice people down there. Okay, well, my thought is this weekend I did a really challenging hike in a phenomenally beautiful place with some pretty incredible people. And I was reminded of three very important lessons that we live here in Spanish Fork. And that is, number one, surround yourself with amazing people who have diverse strengths and personalities and perspectives. Who inspire you to be your best self and really listen to people. And that was like the group I was with this weekend. And it reminds me of people here in Spanish Fork. You know, when my friend first said, hey, let's do this crazy hike. It's really beautiful. I said, no way. And there's no way. And then I thought about it for a while, and then I decided to jump in the deep end of the pool and did the hike. The second thing I learned that we do here in Spanish Fork is that we do hard things one step at a time so that we are wise in how we do them. When we were about two-thirds of the way through my hike this weekend, we were really tired. And I was really nervous about the last third of the hike because it was the hardest part of the hike to come. And I started it really tired. But when things got really hard, we turned on the music and sang at the top of our lungs and just looked a few steps in front of us and we made it to the top. And it was a really good feeling to finish. I think we do things like that here in Spanish Fork when we want to be wise and do things one step at a time and be smart about it. The third thing is the most important one that I learned, and that was keep looking around in gratitude. So it's easy to get lost in the difficulty of the journey and the pain in our legs and in our shoulders from our backpacks. But, and even in good conversations on our hike, but periodically we would exclaim how beautiful our surroundings were and pause in wonder and gratitude for the entire experience and our ability and privilege to do so. So we do those things here in Spanish Fork. We are surrounded by incredible people that we learn from. We have vision for our community and for our lives. And we do hard things a little at a time to accomplish much good. We look around in gratitude for the privilege to live in this beautiful community and be able to do our part with the gifts that we've been given. And that is my message.
Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we are so grateful to be members of this wonderful community here in Spanish Fork. What a blessing it is to us to live in this beautiful place with these wonderful people and the wonderful heritage that we have, that we get to embrace. We're grateful for the welcoming friends and neighbors and employees that make it so. We ask for inspiration and wisdom for the continued stewardship of planning and leadership and direction for our community. Help us to listen to each other and have compassion and kindness and open minds toward each other. We also ask for thy blessing that we can learn and be grateful for and look out for each other no matter what our circumstances may be. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I've asked John Menon Hall to give us the, lead us in the pledge allegiance. Did everyone stand their rights and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I have led allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We sure appreciate SF17 being here and filming this. And so this is kind of a unique situation. In the 16 years I've been on the city council as mayor, we've never done this together. So, you know, this is groundbreaking and a whole new territory for all of us. So it's kind of cool. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to invite Seth Perrins to come up and kind of tell us what's going on, kind of give us an overview and kind of go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a unique opportunity. This is an issue that we've been studying for the past couple of years. And as we reviewed the next steps in this process, of course, public hearings are an essential part of it. And as you can see, there are a lot of people. And rather than make these folks come from wherever they may have come from, near and far, a couple of times to two distinct meetings with the Planning Commission and then later with the City Council, we thought it might be better to have one joint meeting. And so that's why we're here in this unique format today. And this is a great opportunity to receive that feedback from the public. And we are eager to hear and welcome everybody that is here. I want to give a few bits of advice to you as you sit up there. You've got some different microphones than you're used to. And so if you will, as you speak, either pull them close to you or get yourself close to them. You can, you're certainly welcome to move them away from you, put them up in the air as you're not using them. But the folks here running the AV will strain to make sure the audio can be heard in the room. And if you're far away, then they'll have to turn that volume up and it'll potentially feedback. So if you're going to speak, please either come close to that microphone or pull that microphone closer to you. And it should be easier for the public as they're standing here at the podium that they can do that too. We're going to start with a brief review of the project. We'll invite Dave Anderson, our Community Development Director, to do that. And then as a part of Dave's review of the project, he will also show a short video. Following Dave, we'll have our City Attorney Vaughn Pecel review and explain the purposes of public hearings and any possible next steps associated with this project. And then after Vaughn speaks, then I will come back and outline the format of tonight's meeting. It'll be a little bit unique than what if people are used to coming to public hearings, it'll be a little bit unique for what we're used to. And hopefully to speed things along and give everybody the ample opportunity to speak. And then once I'm done, Mayor, we'll jump right to the public hearing. The Planning Commission will need to move and go into a public hearing, and then the City Council as well. And then at that point, we'll be in what we would call a joint public hearing. So with that, I will invite Dave Anderson to come up.
Mayor, City Council, Planning Commission, I just want to say a couple of different things before we watch a video. First of all, and for me, this is really the most important thing, I really, really appreciate the people that are here tonight. It's a mixed crowd. Some people, we have spent many hours talking to, their commitment in terms of learning more about the program, what we're trying to do and why, and sharing their thoughts and concerns is something that we've really appreciated getting as staff. And we expect that we'll hear more tonight. And likewise, that's something that we really, really appreciate. This is a project that's been going on in kind of a formal way now for a little bit more than three years. We've worked on it in a couple of different parts. And without going into much detail, in the interest of trying to move on to give you a chance to hear from somebody other than me, I'm just going to let everybody know, hopefully for most, it's a reminder that the information that we have that's relative to what we're trying to do is available on a webpage on the city's website. There will be more information added. Among other things, we'll add notes that we take from tonight and any additional input that we get, we'll put that out there. The work that we have available for review on the website now really is a work in progress. One of the things that we decided several months ago is that well in advance of presenting a final product for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation on and the City Council actually to take action on, we felt it was important to get input from people in this kind of a forum so that that could be incorporated into subsequent drafts and ultimately, at least potentially a final draft that the council could consider. So that's the purpose for us being here tonight. Once again, we appreciate the input that we've received thus far, the dedication that the different stakeholders have had in spending a lot of time working with us on this. And with that, let's go ahead, because like I said earlier, I know it's kind of a mixed crowd. Some people are very familiar with what we're trying to do and why others are less familiar. So we thought it would be helpful just to review a seven-minute video really quickly and go from there.
Spanish Fork has long been known as an agricultural community. In 1850, the first settler claimed land in the area and soon after populated it with cattle. Since then, the area has grown its roots in agriculture. The first Utah County Livestock Show was held in 1925 with three livestock auctions and agrarian-centered businesses opening in the town thereafter. These farms and businesses not only had an economic impact on the residents of the area, they've had a cultural impact as well. The agricultural landscape, complete with open fields and pastoral landscapes, has strongly influenced the city's sense of place and identity.
I'm in the middle of one of the most beautiful places in our community, affectionately known as the River Bottoms. These 1,800 acres are home to farmland that has been worked for more than 170 years.
The River Bottoms represents the natural and agrarian heritage of Utah County and provides an opportunity for the community to preserve a piece of its heritage.
Areas with the River Bottoms' beauty and access to amenities are rare along the Wasatch Front. For those and many other reasons, the River Bottoms has increasingly felt the pressures to change, largely being driven by the tremendous demand for housing in the region. This pressure is exactly why I feel responsible as a council member to do what I can to help preserve this area for future generations to enjoy.
That's why this project has become so important for Spanish Fork City. In order to solve these issues, the city has developed a two-part plan. First, the plan would protect and preserve the River Bottoms while protecting the property rights of landowners. Second, the plan encourages development in places in the community that make sense, like downtown or around transit plans. Spanish Fork City believes a unique tool is needed in order to satisfy these diverse desires. This tool is called transferable development rights. Transferable development rights, or TDRs, provide a path for Spanish Fork to preserve the River Bottoms, provide monetary compensation to property owners, and direct development to appropriate areas in Spanish Fork. The Land Use Academy of Utah has prepared a short video to help explain the concept.
What is a TDR? It's not a new app for your phone. It means a transferable development right. A TDR authorizes by ordinance a landowner to transfer the right to develop and use land in one area to another property owner somewhere else. There must be specific sending zones to transfer or send those rights to a designated receiving zone. Communities in Utah, by ordinance, can choose to adopt TDRs as a tool in their planning efforts. Communities use TDRs to achieve goals like more public open space in one part of town or more development, or economic growth in another, all without taxing the general public. TDRs give communities a tool to move development potential from areas they may want to preserve, the sending zones, to areas where growth is desired, the receiving zone. The bottom line. This is a policy choice that Utah's communities can make to use to direct growth. But you must have an ordinance to do so, and you must have specifically designated areas that you can send and receive these land use rights. Be sure to read the code on this one.
The Spanish Fork program is planned to follow four guiding principles. Participation must be voluntary. TDR values must be market-driven. Ample opportunity to sell development rights. And consideration for future maintenance and care. Like other TDR programs, specific sending and receiving areas would be defined. The sending area would be the River Bottoms. And the receiving areas would be located throughout the community where the city can more easily accommodate residential growth. The process property owners would follow to participate in the program is intended to be simple, straightforward, and clear. Here's how it would work. First, a property owner would meet with city staff to determine how many transferable development rights they are eligible to receive. This determination is made based on established formulas and the characteristics of individual properties. If the property owner decides they would like to participate, their next step would be to ask the city to create TDR certificates for their property. These certificates then become the commodity that the property owners could sell to a developer. Additionally, a conservation easement would be created to make it clear that the property cannot be developed. With the certificates in hand, property owners are able to negotiate with potential buyers at their leisure. When the certificates are purchased by a developer and the development of the receiving property is approved, the TDRs have served their purpose.
Utah law expressly allows for the use of transferable development rights as a way to balance the rights and opportunities people have to develop with communities' goals to preserve specific areas like the River Bottoms.
One of the key goals of the program is to encourage continual agricultural operations in the River Bottoms. For that reason, special attention will be given to allow for caretaker and posterity homes, the ongoing maintenance of land, the protection of agricultural accesses, and notices about farmers' rights to continue to farm.
What I like about the TDR program is that this creates a way to preserve the land, its beauty and use, but also provides for growth in our community. And we as landowners can be part of both solutions. Our family has worked this land for three generations, but our children really don't have a desire to follow in our footsteps. This plan creates the way for us to get value out of our property without losing the farm. We're all for growth and progress, but not at the cost of losing this beautiful area. With a TDR, we can get a fair value from this property without ruining it.
I like the idea of preserving the natural beauty of the River Bottoms. That's one of the appealing reasons for people wanting to move to Spanish Fork. The TDR program gives me a way to be a part of that while giving me some advantages in my projects. I think it's a big win-win.
With the transferable development rights program, it's really a win-win-win. Landowners receive real value for their property without losing it. Developers get an incentive to develop in areas outside of the River Bottoms. And Spanish Fork continues to grow and provide the best hometown experience anywhere. I love my regular walks down this river trail. It's a peaceful reminder of how great we have it here in Spanish Fork. The TDR concept will preserve this beauty while honoring the interests and desires of so many people in our community. Let's work together in preserving our past and planning for our future.
I'm going to let the content of the video speak for itself. In the interest of time, we're going to move on pretty quickly now. I think it's important, so I'm going to go ahead now and acknowledge some of the, I think, very, very insightful input that we've already received relative to the draft proposal that's been out now for some time for people to review. There are a handful of points that, while we as staff have already given quite a bit of thought to different ways that either questions or concerns could be addressed moving forward, maybe what the best approach would be relative to addressing those things. But let's just go ahead and go through the list of maybe the most common comments that we've received so far relative to the proposal. The first one, for example, right now, the draft that you see would have properties zoned with a minimum lot size of 40 acres if they're annexed. We've had considerable discussion with people about whether that's the best approach or perhaps it would be better to have properties zoned with a minimum lot size of five acres upon annexation. That's something that we would love to further discuss with the Planning Commission, City Council, in preparation of providing an updated draft for you to review, as is the case with the other things that I'll touch on here. The proposal, as it stands today, would allow for a property owner to receive two transferable development rights for properties that are not in the floodplain and one right for properties that are. We've received considerable feedback relative to both that concept of the two and one, and even whether or not two is sufficient. That's something that we've already made tentative arrangements with the consultant that helped us put this draft together. We've made arrangements with them to get together once again to review whether or not we think that's the best formula to use for the program. And we anticipate bringing additional thought, free to consider, on that. Next point, the prospect of the city buying the River Bottoms. We've heard that in a number of conversations that we've had. I know that at least casually, that's been discussed with some of you, the idea that perhaps the city would bond for some significant enough amount to be able to purchase additional land in the River Bottoms by way of an idea. That's something that I think is still on the table. Obviously, if that were to happen, the need for a transferable development right kind of a program probably would go away, not necessarily, for sure. But that's come up a few times, in fact, many. We've heard people say that they believe that the areas that right now were identified as likely receiving areas with the draft work that we've put together should be expanded so that a larger part of Spanish Fork would be open as an opportunity for a developer to use transferable development rights to increase development intensity. The city owns property in the River Bottoms. We had a lot of people ask about what the city's intentions are, whether it's to build a park or anything else. I think those are relatively easy questions probably to provide answers to. I think that's just a matter of us having some more dialogue with the City Council. The city has overvalued rights and undervalued land in the River Bottoms. And this really goes back to that idea of how many rights would it take potentially as a River Bottoms property owner to feel like I was receiving proper value for participation in the program? Again, something that certainly, I think, warrants some additional study, and we're very committed to do that. The city should not force property owners to annex. That's one that I can't answer very clearly tonight. We've heard that over and over again. As of today, municipalities cannot force property owners to annex. But for maybe some, I think, very sparse exceptions, that would not happen. So that does go back to one of the fundamentals of the program that the video touched on, which is that participation, even to the point of being annexed into the city to qualify to participate in the program, is voluntary. Wrapping up with a couple more here, can the program be changed in the future? There are some aspects of what we're talking about now that would be really, really hard to undo. For example, if I were a property owner that participated and indeed had my land encumbered then with a conservation easement, that is a very, very difficult thing to undo. However, future city councils, they have legislative powers that cannot be restricted by councils that are in office today. And the prospect that things could change in the future, that always exists. Little bit of commentary on that. For this program to get off the ground and to be put into play, the will that would be necessary to make that happen and the community interest involved there, I think, frankly, would make it really, really hard for there to be sweeping changes made in the future to, really the intent of the program, which is to limit development in the River Bottoms. And I think this is the last one. What happens if people stop farming in the River Bottoms? Great question. We haven't necessarily seen that happen throughout Utah County yet to date, but as a concern, I think that's something that's worth thinking through. Kind of an off-the-cuff thought relative to that, it's not at all uncommon to see large swaths of land in close proximity to large metropolitan areas that are open and not used as working farms, not used as orchards, not used as pasture land or anything of that sort. They're natural open space, which I just simply throw out now as a suggestion. But again, that is a concern that seems to come up fairly regularly. And I mentioned that one particularly because at least the origin of this program or the proposal really did tie back to consistent input that we received about the need for Spanish Fork City to try to do something to help preserve space for farming. So to be clear, I think that absolutely is one of the fundamental reasons that we're at this point tonight. Nick, I think that's it. Is that right? So with that, I'll turn things over to Vaughn. And once again, I appreciate all the input we've received so far and what we'll get
Mayor and Council, I want to just give you an update on the purpose of tonight's hearing. As you know, we're here to gather input from the public. It's a public hearing. Because I'm the drafter, I'm the one that's writing the ordinance, and I'll need the input of the public. So that's why I'm here, and hopefully that's why you're here, is to hear their comments as well. A public hearing is required as well by state law to amend our ordinances or to amend our general plan and the zoning map. So think of tonight's public hearing as a dialogue, not as a dialogue, excuse me, but as a means to get people's comments on the record. It's an opportunity for them to voice their concerns, voice their ideas, suggestions for the ordinance, suggestions for the maps, and so on like that. We're having a joint hearing, I think, as a convenience to most people. It's rather than coming twice, let's come once, let's get together. It's a big issue. Let's get our ideas and comments out on the record. And then going forward from tonight, so we'll gather tonight's input, we'll listen to the recording, and we'll make notes of each comment, and we'll have the minutes, of course, that would be available to the public. Then we'll have future conversations with the Planning Commission and the City Council. There will be future meetings where the Planning Commission will make a recommendation up or down or somewhere in between on the draft ordinance and on the general plan amendments. And then the City Council ultimately would make a decision, having the public hearing in mind, the recommendation from the Planning Commission and the staff and so on. We'll revise the draft ordinance and the documents, and it'll be approved by the City Council at a later date. So that's where we are. It's the purpose of the meeting is to get the comments on the record and then move forward with those comments and make tweaks to the ordinance as needed. Thank you.
At this point, we are ready to review some of the logistical, well, the logistical format of tonight. And as I said earlier, this is going to be a little bit of a unique format. From those that have maybe come to public hearings in the past, they'll notice that in our public meetings, public hearings in the past, there usually has been a meeting and then the council or the Planning Commission makes a decision that night. And in light of the nature of this and the volume of public comment that we expected to receive, and it looks like that are signed up tonight, we wanted you to have the opportunity simply to hear. And then you can digest that information as you move forward through that public process. And so there is, this is, the purpose is to receive formal comment and no decision will be made tonight. You won't be taking action. It's not been advertised as such. Likewise, there won't be any debate or even formal answers that will be given by you. This isn't fully drafted, as Mr. Pecel just mentioned. So we've got, we have a draft that's been out on the website for some time. The public's been invited to review that for a while. We've had a number of public open houses where people have been able to come, as Dave mentioned in his comments. And so this isn't really a forum where you're going to be giving answers back. Again, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear comments from the public. So if the public wishes to speak tonight, they need to sign up to do so. And we have had 30 people sign up to this point. Right over here, Ashlyn, sitting over there by that sign that says, "Sign up here." If somebody hasn't had the opportunity to sign up and they want to speak to the council tonight, they need to walk over there right now and see Ashlyn and get their name on that list. From that list, Mayor, you've got, you can see who's on there, and we'll gray them out when they come up and when they're done. But the forum that we have set up, the mayor actually will call the people to come up. And so he will invite, you know, the person next to come up. And because this is a true baseball town, home of the most recent Spanish Fork High School Boys' Baseball and Girls' Softball State Champions, we have an on-deck circle and an in-the-whole circle for the spectators, not spectators, but those that wish to speak. And so Mayor, as you call up, you know, maybe if I'm the next person to come up, you might say, okay, Mr. Perrins, you're next. But Brandon Gordon, if you'll come and sit in, you know, one of these chairs. That way, we aren't taking the time to wait for people to come up. As I mentioned, 30, about 30 people have signed up, maybe a few more. If everybody takes the three minutes that they're allotted, that's an hour and a half. And so that's a long time. And if more people sign up, then that's even longer. So we're trying to make it as efficient as we can. And so we've got these on-deck circles right here for the public to sit in. As I mentioned, the comments will be limited to three minutes. 30 people or more, three minutes each, can add up. We invite, and specifically, the forum and format of this meeting is set up to encourage respect. respect. Sometimes we see in public meetings where the decorum of the room gets lost, and maybe people start, they feel like that person really spoke to my concern, and I want to make sure everybody knows that I support that, and so they clap or cheer, or maybe they oppose it, and so they boo or jeer. We see this in public forums like this sometimes where I am intimidated to stand up and speak what I want to say because of the temperament of those that are in the room. So we want to make sure that there is no intimidation, no matter what somebody's thoughts or wherever they may sit on the issue. So we invite the public to stay, to be calm and listen and be respectful. And then the last comment that I have, there should be one more slide. If you ask questions as a part of your comments, as I stated earlier, this really isn't a forum where the council and the planning commission are going to answer your questions directly, especially if people give a lot of hypotheticals. We invite them to apply the draft to their circumstances, or a lot of them have already had opportunities to visit with staff and kind of walk through those ideas. But we invite you to express your thoughts and concerns directly, not necessarily in the forum, in the form of a question, but in what is exactly your concern? If you're, so speak to whatever it is that your concern or comment is. With that, any questions from you in terms of those logistics? And we may, we may want to take those two chairs away and spread you guys out a little bit so you're not...
Yeah.
I think one thing to make sure that people know is that if you are asking a question or a concern, like, and where you see us typing or taking, like, we really want to hear what you have to say, and we're taking notes, and we do hear what you're having to say, and it will be addressed and discussed.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be addressed in tonight's meeting. Yeah, we've got three or four note takers in addition to that, whatever notes you guys may take. We have three or four note takers, and in fact, I think our intention is, after tonight's meeting, we'll compile all of the comments that were made from all of the residents that are here, and we'll just put those out on our website for them to access as well. So they don't need to worry about, you know, what did they write down, or did they get my comment or not? They can see those. We'll just, we'll just put those out on the TDR webpage. Thank you. Any other questions for me? All right, so it'll be appropriate now to have you guys go into public hearings.
All right, just to add on a couple of things there, three minutes, and I don't want you to feel like I'm picking on you, but when three minutes are up, I will stop you. Because a lot of people like to keep going on and on and on. We can't do that tonight. So just, I apologize to start, but I will cut you off after your three minutes. So please be kind, there'll be a timer on the screen there and here, you'll be able to see that. And also, if you have, if someone's already given your comment, we don't need to hear it again. You know, they've done it, so we don't have to repeat. So if you don't have something new, I'd please ask you not to, you know, get up there and say, "That's, that's how I feel." You know, I'm going to let you know I'm the same way. Because once we get those, that comment, it'll be put in the notes, and we'll understand that that's a concern, and there might be a bunch of you have that same concern. So what we're going to do is, first of all, I'll have my city council go into public hearing, and then we'll have to have the planning commissioners go into public hearing. So we'll do this twice, and then when we go out, we'll do the same thing. So...
Motion to go into public hearing. Second.
I've got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilman Wetteck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Entertaining motion to go into public hearing.
I knew that we'd go into public hearing.
Got a motion by Commissioner Morning.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ernest. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. All right, let me pull up my list. Oh, I lost my list. All right, just, yeah, I know, I pushed the wrong button. That's the way I usually roll. Okay, pulling it up right now. All right. All right, where'd you go? I had it, two seconds. All right, the first, the first one up on the list is John Wolenzine, and then Barbara McCall, or Kent McCall, and then Fred Vincent. So, John, will you come up? And then if you guys will come up and sit in these chairs, then we'll be ready to go. You're on the clock.
All righty. I've got 55 acres in the river bottoms, and I realize everybody that walks the trail wants to keep the ground open and have that beautiful view. They're not invested in it like I am, and it won't always be farmed. My children someday will inherit that farm, and they're going to want to sell it, develop it, and do whatever they can with it. I'm much better off in the county than I am with the city. What you're offering with your TDRs devalues my property, and I have no desire to annex into the city with TDRs. If you want to purchase my ground, you can purchase it at fair proper, fair value, property value that the ground's selling for the day I decide to sell it. I would be fine with that, but I'm not interested in your TDRs.
Great, thanks, John. Okay, after Barbara, John Partridge, you can come, no, you're up, you're up.
Oh, okay.
Are you speaking for Kent?
No, I'm not.
Well, then, you're next, okay, you're next, and then Kent, sorry.
Okay.
I'm just trying to get the on-deck circle going.
I feel really strongly that the property owners should be able to keep the value in their property. They should be able to keep it in their families. I don't believe that TDRs are going to work, and because of the financial thing, if you figure out what the values of the property are, it would burden our town with exceptional debt with the bonds. And I feel like people deserve the right to keep their property in their families and use it, like he said, for their families or what they decide to do with it. And I don't think people that walk the trails should be telling the property owners what to do.
Thank you. Kent, are you going to?
Wait, it's Fred.
Oh, my gosh.
We've got Kent.
I've got Kent next. Yeah, so on my list, I got, just let Kent go first, and I'll have you. That way, I keep order. This on-deck thing's got us messed up here. All right, go ahead, Kent.
Well, to begin with, I'm not running for political office. I appreciate every one of you and what you've done. I have a connection with the mayor, and that's a lot of you, and I think you've done a great job, and those that will be moving on, it'll be a great loss, but we really think the world of you. But anyway, I kind of agree with the rest of what's already been said, so, and just being verbose, but when, when you kind of live in, you know, I'm kind of part city, part river bottoms, but the land becomes, you know, like an appendage, like an arm or a leg, and you're really, you're attached to it. And I understand what you're doing, and it's honorable, it's, you know, it works for some and not for others, but I'm kind of one that really doesn't want to do it either, but not that I don't think that what, what you're doing is unfair, but I, it is a hard situation. I'll just shut up after this. My cousin owns property on one side of the road, and all of you were generous and helpful when we developed our land, so I kind of feel like a hypocrite to be speaking, but it is kind of hard for them to realize that, you know, they can't get the fair market value because they can't annex. So the program's a great program, but it's not one that I would agree with. Thank you.
All right, so now we've got Fred Vincent, and next will be John Partridge.
I'm Fred Vincent, and the first thing I want to do, the staff and Dave, they, the last meeting I was to, they told us, "Oh, we're giving out. We've got to get this done. We can't go any longer." So I appreciate what they do, but you know, they've been, they was complaining they'd worked four years. I've been on that farm for over 70, and I don't think that's fair neither. And I'm going to turn 85 this, this month, and I didn't think I'd be down here arguing with Spanish Fork City. I have farmed in the river bottoms for 70 years. I've never thought I'd be here fighting with Spanish Fork City over what should happen to my farm. The river bottoms is what it is because of the farmers. We are the ones who have dug the ditches, we've dug the wells, we've leveled the ground, we've got it to where it produces, and we have paid for it and done the work, and we should be entitled to the, to full payment on our ground. I should be the one that decides when it's time for me to be done, and I, and then that time comes, I should be able to sell my ground for the going price. If Spanish Fork City wants my ground, they should be willing to pay me the going price. I do not like the TDRs. I will not participate in it. Another thing, this farm, I've got over 80 acres in the river bottoms, and that is my retirement, and it's what should be going to my family. And if I die, the kids allowed to sell it, but I hope they can make sure that they get full value out of it. And I don't feel like the city's trying to work with us that way. So.
Fred.
You betcha.
All right, after John will be Deanne Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. That was, that's a hard one to follow. I'm John Partridge. I own ground in the river bottoms and on the receiving end of some of these TDRs. I don't care for them. I have no desire to follow them. I feel there's a disconnect between the city council and the city in general and all of us landowners here. Like he said, we work the ground, we've been here for generations, and honestly, if you would like to come to us and talk to us and get our ideas of what we want to be done or a better way to do it, you probably should come talk to us first instead of making all these plans without our input. Thank you.
Okay, after Terry, it'll be Bonner Giles.
My husband, Dean, and I have owned our property in the river bottoms for over 30 years. We bought it so that we would have the choice of maybe building a home there ourselves, or if and when it was annexed in the city, maybe our children would have a chance to live there as well. And I have a couple of questions. Out of the 1,800 acres, how much of that 1,800 acres does the city currently own? I think that would be something that would be good to know, and it would, it would maybe give us a chance to know exactly what the city is thinking, and, you know, if they own a big portion of that, you know, it might be a different motive than what we're thinking of. And as I look at all of you, maybe by the raise of hand, how many of you own property in the river bottoms? Do any of you own property in the river bottoms? And could you honestly raise your hand and say yes or no? Then why do you have any interest in telling us what to do with our property? We only own a small piece, but I care about what the Vinsons do. I care about what the Wolentines want to do with their property. I care about what the Swensons want to do with their property, and I don't think it's anybody else's business what they want to tell us to do with our property. And it seems like no matter where you go in the country, someone says, "Oh, I want to look at your property and tell you what to do with your property." Well, then buy it and pay the fair market value for that property. That's what I did. I went in and I bought that property so that I could have a say in what was going to happen with that property. Another question I have is, who came up with this program? Maybe it would work in Chicago. Maybe it would work in New York City. I don't think we need a Central Park in the middle of Utah County. And another question I have is if it is something that's been worked on for over three years, how much money has been spent in research and development and time in putting this program together? And it's all taxpayer dollars. How much money has been spent in putting this together when I don't think there's one person in the entire river bottoms that is interested in participating in this program? And I don't know how you can justify spending all of that money on a program that no one that owns property there that should have the say is interested in, and we are greatly opposed to it. I think it's a joke.
Okay, after Bonner, it'll be Wayne Stone.
I'm Bonner Gillis. I've got 22 acres right there, just off the Vincent Ridge where those pretty tree, the tree line is. And two things, I'd like to see it happen, to see what Spanish Fork City could do about cleaning up their junk that their people dump on me down there. You can see evidence of it. It's real funny, because I've called probably a dozen times, and it's always the same thing. Call the, call the Spanish, or the deputy sheriff, they'll, they'll take care of that. But it was a funny thing when you guys ran a storm drain off of Vincent Ridge down across my property. When I came to you, and there was a 300-pound TV set sitting there, and I said, "Hey, is there somebody to come and pick that TV set up?" "Oh, no." "Get a hold of the county." I said, "Well, we'll see what happens then when I get a hold of you on this illegal putting a storm drain across my property." "Oh, we'll be up to pick it up." That was the next thing. But I'd love to see you guys have that down there to see if you could clean that up. There's evidence of it. A guy came along last year, put up his own signs and said, "I want to keep this river bottom pristine, this road." If people will help me, he had about three signs along the road. Guess what? There wasn't one thing dumped there this year until this last week, when you guys drug one of your trees that fell off your side of the road and drug it down in front of my property. Now there's two great big loads of leaves there. I'll end it by saying this, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. I want my kids to decide what goes with my property.
Okay, after Wayne, it'll be Lynn Swenson.
I'm just a small property owner down there, a hobby farmer, and I'd like to keep it the way it is so that I can continue to raise a pig or a sheep or a beef for my family to eat. And I'm totally opposed to taking away our property rights.
Okay, after Lynn, it'll be Jeff Winston.
I'm Lynn Swenson. I guess I'm the guilty one that's got everybody here tonight. I made a lot of phone calls. All I did is say, "Please be to it. Speak what you want to say and how you feel." So everybody's saying what they feel, and I appreciate that. Thank you. We farm, we've got about 100 acres down there. I've been in lots of meetings about this. I am 100% against this, and everybody else is saying their opinion, so I'm not going to say a lot more. I am going to speak for Kathleen Jones. She left, she has my problems. She is against it also. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, after Jeff, will be David Ellsworth.
We own property in the river bottoms, and we're totally against it, too. Thank you.
After David, it'll be Chris Ellsworth.
We're property owners in the river bottom, too, and we're totally against the TDRs. And you guys ought to take a note of preserve. What are we preserving? We preserving here? Are we preserving town? If you want to put high density down Main Street, Center Street, Fourth North, that's not preserving the town. So I think they need to look at that, too.
Okay, after Chris, it'll be Morgan Abbott.
Like David said, we're property owners, we're small property owners out there. We have about 15 and a half acres. The problem with us is I'm totally against TDRs for the simple fact, on both sides, well, almost three sides of our property, we have development, and yet we aren't allowed to do development. I'm against the TDRs. We have 300 homes going across the street. We have, according to talking to people, the city owns on... We have, according to talking to people, the city owns on east side of us in that property. We've asked them, what are you going to do with that? You're going to do a park? You're going to do this? We don't know what we're going to do. We might build a fire station. We might build a recreation center. That's development. But right next door, we're not allowed. My dad bought this property over fifty years ago for a legacy for his family to do what they wanted to do. We don't, we can't afford to farm it. Farming doesn't make you any money. And without the, like you said, forty-acre estates, without water, without equipment, without the desire, you can't keep those. They go into wasteland. And that's just exactly what's going to happen if you go through with these TDRs.
Thank you. After Morgan, we've got Karen Payne.
Hi, my name is Morgan Abbott. I'm a botanist and owner of Botanical Assessments here in Spanish Fork. And I'm a board member of the Utah Native Plant Society and a longtime resident of Spanish Fork. I've attended this meeting today to discuss the future of the River Bottoms. I'm a professional disapproval of this plan. I can see that a lot of thought and research has gone into this proposal, but it doesn't meet the goals that it's claimed to. The current receiving zones to the west, north, and east are still encroaching on wetlands, agricultural areas, and green space. The blue, blue, excuse me, blue polygons within the city center, east of Maine and north of Center, would impact low-income families, retirees, and others who do not benefit from high housing costs or gentrification. This measured as little to protect the River Bottoms, which should include the surrounding wetlands, or providing an avenue for affordable housing for citizens. There's incredible biodiversity within the wetlands of Spanish Fork and the surrounding areas. We have numerous red-tailed hawks, red-winged blackbirds, ducks, bats, hummingbirds, fireflies, and native orchids. How many of you know that we had native orchids? Nobody, right? Okay, so the stream orchid is a small wild flower that ranges to dark purple, to brown, to orange. It's beautiful. It lives in areas with limited disturbance and surface groundwater. It also has been found near hot springs, so it's probably up in the hot pots, too. To quote one of my colleagues at the UNPS, this orchid is part of a vanishing suite of wetland habitats. It would be threatened by development and depleted stream systems. We could also find additional rare native plants in the River Bottoms, including yew lady tresses and another orchid, fringe willow herb, Wheeler's Angelica, swamp milkweed, and spotted joie pie weed. Healthy wetlands are vital for the monarch butterfly, fireflies, and other native insects and pollinators that are deeply, that are, excuse me, that are rapidly disappearing due to encroachment in wild spaces in our community. As a final note, I would like to encourage the city council to reach out to our neighbors and teachers at the Tempanogus Tribe. Indigenous communities protect over eighty percent of the world's biodiversity. They'd be valuable asset as contributors and stewards of these wetlands that we call home. I also believe that they can help us find a solution that would protect these lands in perpetuity so all of our families can experience the beauty of the River Bottoms without looming threat of development. Thank you.
Thank you. After Karen, we'll have Morgan Abbott.
I kind of feel like a fish out of water. I don't own any land in the River Bottoms. But ever since we moved here over forty-five years ago, we've really loved the River Bottoms and how it feels and to have all that green space between us and the neighboring areas. And I would love to see it kept that way. I know some of these farmers are going to someday have to sell. And I would love to see if partnerships could be worked out with Nature Conservancy and/or the American Farmland Group that does legacy farming and protects the land, that keeps it as farms, and passes it to people who want to do that kind of thing, so you can keep it. Or to somehow, so it benefits the whole society. If somebody wanted to turn their farm into a schoolroom where we could take our kids to see where chickens lay eggs and cows give milk. And this is where we get our bacon from, those little piglets someday. You know, that kind of thing, and it'd be a great place for a farmer's market. But I'd love to see it stay as farmland, wetlands, wildlands that just enhance the beauty of Spanish Fork, which I've come to love. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I messed up. Brent McCall, you're next. And after Brent, we've got Steve Wilson.
Hi, my name is Brent McCall, and I own twenty-five acres along South Lane. I don't have a lot to add to what everyone else has said, other than I don't think I'd want to participate in the, in the TDRs. I do, I do, I'm sure you're all aware what South Lane looks like. I happen to be on the west side of the road. On the east side of the road is high-density housing. And I'm concerned, even if I want to keep farming that ground, that I'll be able to. We've already had a fire in a haystack this summer from fireworks. I've got a lot of houses across the street. I have a lot of haystacks on my side of the street. I worry about liability. I worry about my open ditches. If someone should get in the ditch, that I, that I will have legal liability. I worry about people coming from across the street and, and interacting with my livestock and causing more liability. In short, I'm, I'm concerned that I'll, I'll be able to farm it even if I want to. And, and I probably won't participate in the, in the program.
Thank you. After Steve, we'll be, we'll have Alan Byrd.
My name is Steve Wilson. I know a lot of you on this half pretty well. I've been involved in the conversation for the last three and a half years. I own the piece that is directly across from the, the city's property where they've put the parking lot in. You have probably seen a sign on there that is advertising five-acre lots, which three and a half years ago, we had reservations on every one of them. We were asked to hold back and not do it in the county to see how this ended up. And we have done that. Recently, in the last couple of weeks, our, our sign has had some pretty foul language written on it. We have, we are trying to be a, a good partner with the city and basically ask the city to participate with us in a design that works. I cannot come up with any formula that would give us as landowners down there value with the TDR program. And I would challenge the city to come up with a, a formula that they think they can do it. I know the city spent several hundred thousand dollars in reports and studies over the last three years. And it seems like they have got just what they wanted out of those reports rather than an, an independent opinion. It seems as though they've taken away that independent opinion from those consultants. I am not one who wants, we have eighty-eight acres. I don't want to put three hundred townhomes on our property. I don't want to put two hundred quarter-acre lots on my property. I don't want to put a hundred and fifty half-acre lots on my property. But I want to have a, a development on our property that the city's proud of, and it will, and, and it will reflect what, the beauty down there. And I, I can't see a way that those TDRs work, and I voice that to everybody I've talked to. With Dave, we've had this discussion for quite a while. And I'm of the same opinion with all these other people. Don't take away our property rights and our ability to benefit from what the market has done. We certainly wouldn't tell somebody up on the bench, you can't sell your home now because the prices have doubled in the last two years. So thank you for your time. I recognize your commitment to the city, both Planning Commission and City Council. And you have a big decision to make. And we as, we as owners have other options to pursue also. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, after Alan, Lynn Laufson.
My name's Alan Byrd. I would agree with all of these other people that I'm very much against the TDRs. Do not think it's a good idea, and it's robbing us of the rights of our own property. My experience with Spanish Fork City started a little bit differently. I've been working on, on the River Bottoms now for in excess of twenty years with city council members and with staff members. And we have presented very many different ideas, trying to work with them. Even got to the point, one day I got a phone call from the Engineering Department at Spanish Fork City. They had to buy my first seven acres, which is right along the main highway going to Salem. It was critical for the city that they bought that acre, and they needed it now. And I got called almost every day. Finally, we came to an agreement, and we came up with a fourteen-page contract because they wanted to make that, the, the crown jewel of Spanish Fork, was I think the, the word that they used. And they were going to build ponds there, and they were not going to have any moss. They were going to have a trail around the ponds. They were going to have grass and landscaping down to the edge of the water. They hired, Spanish Fork City hired a landscape engineer to give us an elevation, not an elevation, but a plot map of what it would look like. I paid an extra eighty thousand dollars for the sewer line to be run under the, under the, the river for future development of that property. And now I'm told that it can't be built on. When we bought, when we bought the property over twenty years ago, it was zoned in the master plan. It was zoned residential and medium residential and commercial, ten acres of each. And I, by the way, if you'd like to drive down that road going to Salem, look at the pond off of the side and see if it looks like the crown jewel of Spanish Fork. And all the promises that I had, that there would be a road that would be split half and half, and there would be a parking lot there. And none of that came across in both my signature and the mayor's signature at the bottom of that contract. And so I, I'm nervous when Spanish Fork City tells me they're going to treat me trailely on TDRs. Thank you.
After Lynn, we'll have Scott Nichols gone.
I will be very brief, because, Mr. Mayor, I don't want you to cut me off. I know. My name's Lynn Laufson. I'm a property owner in the River Bottoms area, and I am totally against this proposal. I do not want to sell my property development rights. Thank you.
All right, after Scott, we'll have Kara Smith. John, so Kara, come on up.
My name is Kara Smith, Kara Vincent Smith. I'm the daughter of Fred Vincent. And I'm very proud to be the daughter of a farmer. There's been a lot of talk in this country lately about celebrating the heroes of this country. We've talked about the first responders and the medical people and the teachers. I think a very under-neglected hero in this country is the American farmer. The farmers are putting in sixty, eighty, a hundred hours a week. We don't even comprehend how many hours they've put in. The Vincent family farm has been in the family for over a hundred years. And now somebody is coming in and saying, we want to tell you how to use that land and how to do it. I roamed the River Bottoms as a child. I graduated from Spanish Fork High School. I grew up before we had paved trails and all the walkways and things. We roamed through those fields like crazy. But I want you to know also, we roamed the upper bench. You know what? There were three farms. It was all, I mean, three houses. It was all orchards. It was all that, the Pioneer Cemetery. Remember, you had to hike through ten fields to get to it, to be able to find that thing. And now that upper bench has developed to the point that it's crazy. Where were the visions of keeping green space? The visions of keeping farmland and orchards and all of that beautiful land when we were developing the bench? Where were all those visions as we've expanded down into, towards Lake Shore and Benjamin, when the houses are so thick? All of that was farmland. It was beautiful farmland. And now, all of a sudden, this farmland has been targeted when all the other was allowed to develop at fair market value all the way along. I hope that you'll consider the hard work, the hours, and everything that those farmers have put in, and not tell them how to use their heritage. Thank you.
So we'll have Paul Pryor, and then after Paul, it'll be Ed Roberts.
If you started the three minutes when I stood, I'll, I'll sit down. Okay, I'm, I'm here. Hey. All right. First of all, I, I don't know who was it. Covey or someone said, begin with the end in mind. Number one, they said, what happens when the farmers stop farming? I'm a prime example, okay? Physically, I can't do it anymore. And my son said, Dad, we've seen you go through so many cycles. We're not going to do it. I've worked hard, and I've invested in the land. I was born and raised in Denver. We, we had a farm. We came out. I've seen what happens. Disneyland was farmland. Knott's Berry Farm was a farmland. Fifty, think fifty, hundred years from now. The farming, half of that is to preserve the farming. I, I, I'm lucky if I get a hundred bucks in acre rental value. I just can't do it anymore with the equipment. Big picture. Mother Nature, we have a thousand eight hundred acres. Central Park, I think, is eight hundred acres. So it's less than half. I, big flood in the fifties. Big flood in nineteen eighty. A common denominator is Mother Nature, okay? But our land is as valuable as the land west of the road. It's as valuable as the land in Pueblo River Bottoms. It's valuable. You just got to do it. And I feel like legal stealing, if you will. I think TDRs are monopoly money. I like the idea of eminent domain. If you have a million-dollar view, then pay the million dollars for it. Like a lot of here, I can't, I can't do the farming. I've invested to ultimately sell it for development. Now, I came from Colorado. In Durango, I, I think wilderness area, wetland, yes. I think ultimate best use for this for a hundred years from now is another golf course. Plan it, so yes, agriculture in the meantime. I like the concept of cluster housing. You're going to run out of room. Where are you going to put your million-dollar homes? I would put cluster them in there with a golf course. Eventually, you could have a twenty-seven-hole golf course around the floodplain areas. Have your, your homes in there. We can get property for it. We can farm in the meantime. Those that want to farm, but I, Partridge, I, I don't know if it's, if TDRs are legal, then I, I think they're funny money. You'd be taken from us. And then Partridge said, he's in the receiving here. The other guys, yeah, they'll complain. They'll just say, well, I can't sell because I've got, the developers got to buy TDR rights. I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Apologize upfront.
Think a hundred years down the road, and cluster housing, nice homes, farm the wetland. You know what I'm saying.
We heard you. We heard you, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pick a puzzle piece. Picture it, put it together.
All right. Okay, after Ed, will be Liz Randkamp. Sorry if I mispronounce those names. I get it all the time with mine.
I just wanted to say that I'm opposed to using the TDR program for the River Bottoms.
Oh, and I'm against the TDRs.
Okay, yeah, there you go. You, you did. After Liz, we've got Chad.
And I'm a Swenson, by the way.
Okay. Thanks, George. After Liz, we'll have, we'll have Chad Swenson.
Okay, I'm, I'm Liz. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the, I'm not a landowner. I live further down the river. But I appreciate how beautiful the area is and the access that we have available to us as, as members of our city and community. And I appreciate all that's been done by the farming and farmers to beautify and keep that area pristine and lovely for the rest of us. I think that in general, I feel like we, as a city, is, we're building too much high-density. Like, I don't know that that's what everybody wants. I love our beautiful, you know, single-family lots where they are. I would love to keep that area in the River Bottoms not built in. I'm afraid that, you know, as, as we've started building in down there, it's just going to be a domino effect. Because why wouldn't? You know, if you're losing your beautiful view. Well, I know Pat Sorensen and her family, they've sold off to move off to somewhere where they can have a beautiful view again. But I think that there's other ways to earn the money, you know, than have high-density, whether you're looking for tax base or, or TDRs. I I, I, I don't know that I'm approving TDRs. I think that, you know, it might be a loss to those who have property. But, you know, why don't we start a sales tax that is specifically, you know, point, you know, 8% on everything that's sold? We have a ton of new retail coming in. Then we can buy up the property or whatever needs to happen so that we can, you know, make it right to keep that area beautiful. And I just, as we walk the trail on our side, at the bottom of the, the trail there, you look into people's backyards. That's not, that's not the beautiful trail that we take our bikes the other direction so that we can really enjoy being out in, in the heritage that we have of Spanish Fork. And I appreciate all that's been done to keep that area beautiful. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, after Chad, we'll have Jackie Smith.
Thank you for having me. My family owns a number of acres down in the River Bottoms. I think maybe 100 acres or so. I watched my grandpa, when he was alive, farm that many, many summers as I would go down to help. You know? Our intention would be to have that continue to be farmed. But me personally, I'm against the TDRs. I think we should be able to retain the right to do with that land what we wish to do. Our intention right now is to have that still farmed. But I am against the TDRs. Thank you.
All right, after Jackie, we'll have Stacy Roberts.
I had really hoped I would just get up here and say like, "Hey, guys, I agree with everybody," and sit back down. But I actually have something to say tonight. I have read the ordinance. I have read it multiple times. How many of you realize that my dad can't build a house on part of his ground? Ground that he's owned for 60 years? Because he's not a second-generation owner of that ground. I just wanted to point that out. There's another thing I want to point in here. Dave said that perhaps we could let ground fallow after people gave up farming. In the easement, Spanish Fork City reserves the right to periodically inspect said property for violations of the easement property. And if upon 60 days' advance written notice, the grantor has not eliminated said violations, Spanish Fork City may remove or eliminate at the expense of the landowner any violation by grantor of the easement. A Spanish Fork City authorized representative may enter upon said land for the purpose of inspection with 48 hours' notice. So, it doesn't sound like to me that we can get up tomorrow and say, "We've decided not to farm." Because if we participate in the TDR program, we've got rules we have to follow or the city can enforce this and fine us. So, I don't think we can just let it go. Another interesting thing that came through is I am one of the ones that have asked, "Can a TDR be undone?" And since I haven't been able to get a clear answer, I asked the state property right omnibusmen and got my answer back while this meeting's been going on. A conservation easement is similar to any other easement, which like a contract, could be amended or extinguished if there is a mutual agreement by both the property owner and the easement holder, in this case, Spanish Fork City. So, yes, to the extent that the city and property owner agree in the future to eliminate or amend the easement, that is technically possible. So, to me, this plan, we are basically investing in a sunk cost fallacy, which is where we have put so much money and time into this plan that we can't admit that maybe it's not the best step. That's pretty much what I have to say, except for a couple people have requested that I mention. And I do believe this wholeheartedly. If the city wants this ground, the city needs to step up and pay fair market value for this ground. It's not our responsibility to provide open space. And residents of the city need to understand that it's not open space that you can go walk through. You are requiring someone to work, to give you a green field to look at. If the city wants it, the city needs to pay for it. And one thing my dad has been whispering in my ear is that we need to respect the farmers because they are the ones providing our food. So, let's make sure that we're not making this impossible for them. And it may mean that they have to sell ground and go somewhere else to farm, but don't take away the value of their ground. As for me, I think all of you know I am not in favor of the TDR program. And I would not be able to encourage my dad or my brothers and sisters to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, after Stacy, we'll have Paul Bergen.
I'm against the TDR. My dad was Ray Allen Swenson and he's farmed that land forever. And we just want to keep it as farm. Thank you.
And after Paul, we'll have Ral Christiansen.
Sounds like I'm one of the last ones, so you're almost done. Paul Bergen, I live in the River Bottoms. I own a farm. I appreciate your willingness to listen. Thank you. I appreciate the surveys that you've done. I appreciate the work that you've done. You know, there has been some costs, but I appreciate the fact that you actually want to listen. I live across the street, I live in the River Bottoms, but also across the street from the BYU Dairy Farm. And we've been trying to talk to Salem City Council about that for almost two years. They didn't listen. They could care less about what we had to say. And that's why there's a referendum in place right now for that BYU farm. So, thank you for listening, at least. You know, I, I appreciate the TDR because it seems like it's a compromise. I don't think anyone can get everything that they want in a city. I don't, I, I respect the rights of property ownership. I'm a farmer. I own land here in the River Bottoms. I'm not sure that in a growing city, we're all going to be able to get what we want. And I appreciate the fact that the TDR is at least a program to say, "Is there some amount of compromise?" So, if it can actually work the way it's intended, where it actually gives material value to people who still want to have a farm or still, and don't want to develop their property, then I would be in favor for that, if it actually works. Another good compromise is conservation development. We've been saying this over and over to Salem and they could care less. But conservation development is approved by the Utah League of Cities and Towns. And if you don't know how it works, it's basically where farmers can sell their land to developers. But it's, it's, it's zoned for a certain type of development, which is more open. And so, you can put almost as many houses on it as you would otherwise. But the houses are on small lots in clusters with open space in the middle. And so, think of like, you know, think of, think of this as a piece of land that's being sold. You'd have a cluster here, a cluster here, and a cluster here, and then big open space in the middle. Right? The, the houses are on small lots because they don't need lots of space because they've got 100 acres or 50 acres or whatever it is of open space in the middle. So, they all share, and the community shares open space in the middle. But farmers can still sell their homes to developers. It's just that it's zoned to be built in a certain way. It's called conservation development. It's approved by the State of Utah. I think it's a good way out of this situation. I think it's where a lot of people get most, everybody gets most of what they want. And I'm not sure that everyone will get everything that they want in this situation. I respect the right of everyone here to sell their land for the maximum price. Property rights, I expect that. I'm one of them. However, there's another side to that, which is, as a property owner, I have a right to enjoy what I bought.
Thank you.
And so, that's my right too, is I want to be able to live in a rural area. And that's what I bought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, Ral, I guess you're the cleanup.
Yeah, I don't have property in the River Bottoms, but I have property within the city limits that I farm. I don't know how the TDR will work as well. It doesn't sound from what I've investigated. I wonder on the back end, when these certificates or deeds are willed over to the developer, if they go towards the receiving end of the property? If this developer says, "Hey, I've got, you've got the property down by the freeway," or whatever, "And I've got these TDR certificates that lets me up the ante on these development." If it will upset the city or the people in that area? Now, will the city be liable or obligated to keep that density zone? If it'll be a liability issue if a developer's thought that far ahead? I don't know. Just something to consider. It might be over, we are worried about density. Anyway, just something, I don't know if I like the TDR situation. I've got property too, as well, that someday will be sold. But I realize that everybody has something at stake here. Hopefully, it'll all come out for the best.
Got one more. We've got Bob Halverson.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you do. I am Bob Halverson. I'm representing my dad, Gail Halverson. He just turned 101, so he is not farming. And none of the kids farm, but we have great neighbors, Paul Pryor and Lynn Swenson, that help us out a lot. And we, as a family, my dad is opposed to the TDRs for the, for that purpose. Don't feel that it's right for a few landowners to provide green space for a community when, if the community wants the green space, then the community should pay for the green space. It puts a financial burden on the landowners. So, for that reason, we feel that we are not in favor of the TDRs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We really appreciate all the comments. And everything, everyone's going to be heard. It's all been written down. It's been recorded. And so, we're going to go out of public hearing. So, I'm going to ask for my counsel, entertain a motion to go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Menon Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Entertain a motion from the commission to move out of public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ernest. A second by Commissioner Carden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, can you say those again?
The motions?
Yes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ernest. And a second by Commissioner Carden.
Thank you. All right. Dave, we're going to have Dave come up and tell you what the next process is in this. Not dates, but just what the process is. And we'll kind of go from there.
We'll be looking for additional direction from you in the next, frankly, I think, probably couple of months. We don't anticipate now that we will have anything really ready to present to you in any kind of a formal manner until January, is our guess. By way of our next steps as staff, it's to take what we've heard tonight, to compile that with what we've been hearing for the past several weeks and to refine the draft that has been the subject of tonight's conversation in an effort to put something together that is an improvement on what we have now and something that ultimately will work. And I want to be clear, that is the marching orders that we believe we have as staff, which is to come up with a program to limit development in the River Bottoms that, that works. So, that's, that's a really, really loose description of next steps and where we go from here. I don't know if anybody else has anything to add, you know, by way of Seth or Vaughn. But, you know, once again, we heard certainly some things tonight that we hadn't heard before. A lot of things that we heard tonight, we have. And in any event, like I mentioned earlier, we know there is a need to review certain aspects of the proposal. But I'll continue to emphasize the underlying goal and premise of everything that we're doing here. It's to come up with something that works. So, that's where we're at as staff. And we appreciate people's patience. I want to make that clear as well. We certainly have not tried as staff, and not to speak for any of you, but certainly in the, in the interactions that I've had with, with you and your capacities, you've wanted us to be methodical and deliberate as we've thought about all of the different consequences that would come, you know, given the different options that exist for just ultimately land use regulation of the River Bottoms. And I appreciate the time that you've given us to do just that, to be very deliberate and thoughtful. And once again, we appreciate the input that we've received.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you all for your comments. You know, we can have a discussion and not get everybody all excited. And that we have some, because this is a hot topic. And I appreciate coming up and expressing your concerns. And believe me, this group up here, we will take that all under consideration and we'll try to come up with what's best. And honestly, I don't know what's best yet. And I don't think anybody else does. So, until we do, we'll just keep looking at it and studying it and seeing what we can come up with. But once again, I want to thank everyone that came up here at the council, the commissioners, you, property owners and people who are concerned. So, thank you for being here and have a drive home safe. Thank you.